Thing on our agenda tonight is to approve our agenda. Actually, we did approve, we've already approved the agenda, but we do want to make an announcement that we did amend the agenda tonight to have talks of our budget amendment on there, and that's going to be letter Q, I believe that we said it as. I'm, Ms. Ashley Burgoyne is not able to make it out tonight. She's on, she went to go visit her sister that was graduating, so she's not able to be with us. She was going to try to attend electronically, but she's not able to do that, so we're going to pass on that as well tonight. Next on our agenda tonight is a moment of silence, and so if you will, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you can, would you stay with me for, I'd say, the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we're going to go straight into board member highlights, and we'll start with Ms. Holly Cave to my right.
I was just sitting here thinking that I lost track of all my highlights. So, thanks for picking me first. Oh, my gosh, no, it's fine. So, several weeks ago, some of us attended the MTC Community Leaders Breakfast and got to see some of our students honored there, and that was really cool. They had fog machine and loud music at, you know, seven something in the morning, and we were just pleasantly awakened, and it was just, it was great to honor those students that have succeeded in Massanut Technical Center. And then I went to, and gosh, I can't remember when this was either, but the, at Elkton Middle School, they had a staff versus students wiffle ball tournament, and that was really cool. And they play really hard. I was afraid someone was going to get hurt. The mom in me was like, you know, and so it was just great at the end of the year to see those fun events that go on, and I know there was a lot of that. I really enjoyed all the graduations last week. When I looked at the schedule for the week, I panicked a little bit because we had a lot of meetings intertwined with the graduations, and it was just so great. And I feel like it came so fast, like I cannot believe January to June went as fast as it did, and it almost felt like just a reward, really, to get to be there, to be involved with those graduations, and to see the students get what they've worked so hard for, and so it was just a really great time, and I guess that's all, I think. I wasn't prepared. Thank you, Chair Cross.
Dr. Shiflett, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think my highlights would, my highlight would be the five graduations that we attended last week to see our students reach that pinnacle in their career thus far, and hopefully they're moving on either to employment or they'll be enrolled or enlisted, and they'll begin the next chapter of their journey. So, that was, that was a highlight for me, to be at those graduations.
I'll go next. I agree with that, too, and I also want to say thank you to all our teachers in RCPS that got all of our kiddos to that point to walk across this stage. I had an opportunity to go to MTC East Rocks and Spotswoods graduation, and one thing that we did a little bit different this year than we've done in the past is we asked our principals if they would acknowledge all of our MTC graduates as a full graduation body, so they all had an opportunity to stand up and to be recognized with their family and the community that was there. So, I thought that was really neat for them because they worked so hard as well to graduate from MTC with their certificate. And then the other thing that we wanted to recognize was those kids who were going into the Armed Forces, which were really not kids anymore, but I really wanted to recognize them for what they were doing, and really gratitude, and I'm almost, I get emotional sometimes, I'm an emotional person, but I almost cried when I saw that, just because I'm grateful for the sacrifice that they're making for us to be able to live here in America freely, so that was cool. That was a great highlight to see all the kids graduate and see moms and dads and brothers and everyone celebrating, and it was just a, it was a good time, so that's my highlight as well. Ms. Hurst?
I want to highlight the senior walk that our seniors do at the end of every year. This is something that has started up in the last couple of years, but as a former teacher, it's one of my favorite things. As a former elementary teacher, you get to see the seniors who left your elementary school, they come back and just walk the halls in their cap and gown, and we just line the hallways, all of the elementary students just line the hallways, and we cheer on those graduates. And so, I, that for me was just really special because this, it'll be several years that I am going to see this, but I always, it's always fascinating for me and just heart, it's just a feel-good moment to see these kids that you've poured so much into, you've invested a lot of time and energy, you know a lot of the battles that they face, and they come back and they're ready to graduate, and they're walking the halls, and our elementary and middle school staff, they just do a great job of getting the kids, the elementary and middle school kids, ready, and they're cheering, and they're holding cards and signs and, you know, shouting congratulations. And so, I went out to Audubon to see the former students at Audubon Walk, and that was just a really special time, and I'm really glad that we do that because we get to tell our fifth grade students, "Look, this is coming for you, you can do this," and so that's, that's probably, we've had a lot of things going on the last two weeks, but that one was definitely one of my highlights.
Did you see quite a few students that you had when you were there?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, that was really special. And it's funny because when they leave you in fifth grade, like, time stops for us at the, time stops, I was on. Time almost stops for me anyway as an elementary teacher because I can still see them as a fifth grade student even though it's been seven years, and so when they come back, they're, they're grownups, they look completely different sometimes, and so a couple of times I just have to say, "Remind me who you are," just because they look so different, but yeah, once, once a student, always a student, so.
That's special, that's very special. Ms. Laura?
I'm so glad that you guys were able to go to graduation ceremonies and have that as a highlight, because I went to graduation ceremonies, and I'm not calling it a highlight because I'm so sad my baby graduated, so I am now no longer a parent in Rockingham County Public Schools, but I'm still here for all kids, and I've still adopted a whole bunch of kids, and the walkthrough is super special. I've seen kids, I know kids fought after COVID to keep it in place because they wanted, they had looked forward to seeing their little brother, and the little brother was looking forward to seeing the big sister and doing the fist bumps, and it's really, it's a really great time, it's a special time for our kids. And then, so I was able to fist bump my own child, and then I climbed on a bus and drove the eighth graders from J. Frank to the James Madison U-Rex Center, so they could, they could play all day and have their field day out and about, so I think that was really special for them, and it was super special for me because I got to drive a bus. I was also, I drove a bus to the Ag Olympics, I drove Spotswood and Mont Video to Ag Olympics, I think it was the week before, I don't know, all this time is running together, and it's all running together because I was also able to help 16 kids get, or 16 teams, some are one, some are two students, get their Ag Science Fair papers submitted, so we got that done, so now we're desperately working on trying to get them ready for state convention because it's not over. There's still lots of great things going on in Rockingham County Public Schools, and state convention will be the end of the month, and I'll have 16 teams competing with Ag Science Fair projects, and if anybody knows anything about Ag or science that would like to judge, like to run these kids through an interview, call me because I need some help. So, that's enough highlights, I think, for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. First thing we're going on, on action items tonight is going to be our minutes for the May 20th, 2024, and do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? And June 5th, I guess.
I move we approve the minutes as presented from May 20th, 2024, and June 5th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no, motion passes 4-0. Next on our list tonight is bills and mileage, and Dr. Shiflett, you have that.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the May 2024 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, do I hear a motion for the board members?
I move we approve the bills and mileage as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments there on this? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no, motion passes 4-0. Dr. Shiflett, you also have field trips.
Yes, sir, Chairman Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. East Rockingham High School, FFA Officer Retreat, June 17 through 19, 16 students. Shenandoah Valley Campground, Verona. FFA State Convention, June 24 through 27, 12 students. Virginia Tech, Monta Video Middle School, FFA State Convention, June 24 through 27, 15 students, to Virginia Tech, and then Broadway High School, FFA Leadership Camp, July 9th through 12, 6 students. The Graves Mountain Lodge in Syria, Virginia, and I do recommend approval of these trips.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Any board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to approve that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no, motion passes 4-0. Next on our list, agenda R for E is third and fifth grade science textbook adoption, adoption, and Mrs. Tammy Stone, you're here for that.
Good evening, Chairman Cross, school board members, and Dr. Shiflett. I'm here to request a motion to recommend the adoption of the Five Ponds Press program for our third through fifth grade science curriculum as selected from our Science Elementary Adoption Committee.
Thank you.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend the adoption of the Five Ponds Press Science Program as the third through fifth science curriculum as selected by the Science Elementary Textbook Adoption Committee and presented by Tammy Stone, Supervisor of Science.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments with Ms. Stone, why she's, we got her here with us? All right.
I just have, in the future, I know you worked really hard to get, when you put the committee together, to get parents from all over and educators from all over, and I think from my understanding, there were, I imagine it's really hard to get everybody to agree on a date to come together to discuss those things, and so, you know, when one parent can't make it or one teacher can't make it, it, you know, I think it left at this time to maybe only one parent even got to participate, and I was just wondering if in the future if we could just include some extras in the committee just for that circumstance happening, you know, that, okay, this parent couldn't come, and I know I did understand that you reached out in every way and did, you know, video, the thing, and all that, so all that was great, but I was thinking, you know, maybe it would be helpful if we had extra parents on the committee, and that way, if some can't make it, we still have, you know, four or five backups that could, you know, be there, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no, all right, motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Thank you.
Next on our list is federal program grant applications, and Ms. Judd is here. Is she with us tonight? There she is. I didn't know whether you already took off for the summer.
No.
I'm just joking.
I'm working hard.
I'm just joking.
Good evening, Chair Cross.
Good evening, Chair Cross, members of the school board, and Dr. Shiflett. On your agenda for action are the applications for five federal program grants. We've got Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, Title IV, Part A, and Title I, Part C. All of these are federal grants within the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. These original applications are based on funding, which is leveled to that of the 2324 school year, with final allocations to be provided to us in the early fall. And once the applications are approved by the Virginia Department of Ed and final allocations are released, then I will be amending these applications to reflect those updated amounts. The purpose of Title I is to provide all children a significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education as schools work to close educational achievement gaps. The 2024-25 Title I, Part A, grant has been based on a suggested level funding amount of approximately $2,081,146. This application reflects approximately 5,459 students identified from 15 Title I elementary schools, with 3,734 of those students being classified as low income. Sources of data used for determining Title I status consist of free and reduced lunch household applications. And we did an analysis of students being redistricted affected with the 2425 school year to make sure we would appropriately adjust the enrollment and low income for those schools in anticipation of redistricting. In addition, the Community Eligibility Provision, that's the CEP designation as of March 1, 2024, was utilized. There are 11 Title I schools with CEP designation this year as of March 1. They include Plains, Riverbend, Elkton, Lacy Spring, Mountain View, South River, Cub Run, Audubon, Folks Run, Pleasant Valley, and John C. Myers. The funds in the Title I application are primarily allocated to the salaries and benefits of reading support staff. And that includes 17 teachers and seven and a half teacher assistants. In addition, we've got strong starts, staff funded by Title I, that's two teachers and four assistants in that program. There's a behavior specialist, a small amount for conference education and training, compensated services for homeless transportation drivers, and materials and supplies for math and reading remediation. In addition, Title I funds parent and family engagement activities. We do have two new Title I schools for this next school year. So we're adding Peakview and John Whalen to our list of Title I schools. Now with these two schools, students in all 15 elementary schools will benefit from Title I funds and services. In addition to private schools, Eastern Mennonite Elementary School and Redeemer Classical School will participate in the Title I program to provide remedial services for their students who reside in Rockingham County Title I school attendance areas and have, these students have to have identified academic needs. We are required to provide equitable services to private school students that either, for Title I, live in our attendance area. And then for Title II, Part A, federal funds awarded under Title II, Part A, support programs to increase academic achievement. In Rockingham County schools, Title II funds are used specifically by providing evidence-based professional development activities that improve the knowledge of teachers, principals, and paraprofessionals. The 2425 Title II, Part A, application is based on level funding of approximately $338,000. These funds will be used for salaries and benefits of our four literacy coaches. Two private schools, Redeemer Classical School and Blue Ridge Christian School, have elected to participate in Title II funds for the 2425 school year to use for staff professional development. Title III, Part A, the purpose of Title III is to provide support for the education of English learners who have limited English proficiency. The 2425 application is based on level funding of approximately $145,000. To date, approximately 1,535 kindergarten through 12th grade students and 14% of the division's enrollment qualify for EL services. And 376 EL students continue to be monitored. We'll use these funds for five full-time EL instructional assistants. And with the Title III funds, these EL assistants are on top of the teachers that are providing core instruction to our EL students. Title IV, Part A, grant programs are designed to support the comprehensive needs of students. And this application is written based on level funding of approximately $163,700. Title IV funds are transferred into Title I. And we use those funds for two full-time elementary behavior specialists. In addition, a small percentage will be used for the same Eastern Mennonite Elementary School and Redeemer Classical Private School students eligible for Title I. This is because we transfer Title IV into Title I. And then finally, Title I, Part C. An action item for your approval is the Education of Migratory Children Certification Form. The purpose of the migrant education program is to design and support high-quality and comprehensive educational programs that provide migratory children with the same opportunity to meet challenging state academic content and student achievement standards expected of all children. In addition, the migrant education program works to ensure that all migrant students graduate with a high school diploma or GED that prepares them for responsible citizenship, further learning, and productive employment. Federal funds are allocated by formula to states based on each state's per pupil expenditure for education and counts of eligible migratory children age three through 21. Now, James Madison University serves as the lead division agent and administrator of the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program, which is funded by the Virginia Department of Ed. And it's the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program that actually writes this grant application, which does include a total of eight participating school divisions, including our school division. Because they are still working on their 2425 application, which is due to the Virginia Department of Ed on July 1, I did provide in your packet some information so you could learn a little bit more about migrant ed. That was a letter to Dr. Shiflett, as well as the MOU, that if Dr. Shiflett is comfortable, he can sign for migrant ed. I do want to take the opportunity to thank the numerous central office leaders and literacy coaches who provided information and data pertaining to the programs they oversee. So it's really helpful because we've got people that are experts in their programs. And they help provide information that I can put together in these grant applications. So thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I present these applications of federal programs for your approval tonight.
Did you say under Title I, all 15 elementary schools were going to be, now does that include funding for meals or not?
So with Title I, if they're a CEP school, their meals are covered under CEP, but the Title I doesn't necessarily provide funds for meals. But we did mention 11 of our elementary schools are CEP schools. So they do have their meals covered.
Can you remind us again what CEP means?
That's Community Eligibility Program.
And 11 elementary schools?
11, yes, as of March 1. And we expect that might change for the following year. We may have more.
And one more thing, you said Peakview was a part of?
Yes, I did.
But will you go over that just real briefly, real quick?
I'm sorry.
Was Peakview was a part of, was that Title I, they was going to be added to that?
Peakview is a part of Title I, yes.
All right.
So, but this will be their first year. 2425 will be their first year of being part of Title I. They are not currently Title I for the 2324 school year. So this is new for them.
Okay. All right. Board members, any other questions?
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the federal grant program, program grant applications for the 2024-2025 Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, Title IV, Part A, and Title C, Title I, Part C, as presented by Michelle Judd, Director of Federal Programs.
All right. We're not going to make him read that again. So do I hear a motion, board members?
You want me to read it again? I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the federal program grant applications for the 2024-2025 Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, Title IV, Part A, and Title I, Part C, as presented by Michelle Judd, Director of Federal Programs.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes. All opposed, no. All right. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Judd. And have a good summer. I sure will see you one more time. Mr. Reed, you're next on our list tonight. And bid recommendations for our track restoration at East Rock and Turner-Hashby High School.
Yes, Chair Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. The bid for track renovation at East Rockingham High School and Turner-Hashby High School was specified and advertised. We sent two firms, bid packages. We had one respond with a sealed bid as follows. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, American Tennis Courts Corporation, in the amount of $207,952.50 for East Rockingham High School, and for $201,705 for Turner-Hashby High School track, for a total of $409,657.50.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for track restoration at East Rockingham and Turner-Hashby High Schools to the lowest bidder, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Ms. Cave, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Any questions, comments? When would it begin?
This summer. The schedule is to have them done before the fall athletic season starts, yes.
Great. Board members, do I hear a motion? Yes? Yes? You have another one here with us?
You got one.
All right. Yeah, you do. You got a few. All right.
So the bid for renovation of the football bleachers at Spotswood High School for ADA compliance was properly specified and advertised. And 10 firms were sent bid packages. We had two firms respond with sealed business followers. Our recommendation is to award the contract to the low bidder, Lance Construction Company, in the amount of $144,263.
Awesome.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for the football bleachers renovation for ADA compliance at Spotswood High School to the lowest bidder, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cave? Any questions, comments? Same thing?
This project will not be completed until the winter of this coming year.
Okay.
Due to having to have stamped engineered drawings before they can start fabrication, the timeframe just was not such that we could get it done before the fall season. So it'll happen after the fall season.
Do you have an idea on what side it will be, it will be on the seating?
Yeah, it'll be on both.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be back end-loaded on both. The ADA seating will be at the top of the bleachers there on both sides with ramps going up to each side.
Wow. All right. That's nice. That's nice. Right now, for those that don't know, we have very limited seating on, especially the home side, for those needing ADAs, for that seating there. So thank you.
Also, the walkways will be widened and handrails added, and walkways on the ends of the bleachers also.
Great.
And you said, so none of this will be happening during the football season?
That's correct. It won't happen until after the fall season, yeah.
So we'll get to it.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say yes. Yes. All opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. And we have one more.
So the next item is our mechanical maintenance service contract. And I would start to thank, I would like to start by thanking and recognizing the members of the evaluation committee. If you may recall, this was a request for proposal rather than a sealed bid, and the committee was approved by the board earlier this year. The members of the board were Red Danzy, Principal of Spotswood High School, Amy Wooters, Principal of J. Frank Hilliard Middle School, Drew Miller, Principal of Montevideo, Mountain View Elementary School, Carol Miller, Administrative Assistant, Maintenance Department, Mark Klosensky, Maintenance Facilitator, and Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance. The request for proposal was properly advertised and specified. Six offers received a proposal and two submitted proposals. The committee reviewed both proposals, and the committee interviewed and rated both vendors, as you can see in the ratings below. Our recommendation is to award the mechanical service, maintenance service contract to the highest rated offer, Riddle Burger Brothers of Mount Crawford, Virginia, in the amount of $648,552. As you can see the ratings there, Riddle Burger, the committee rated Riddle Burger 586 points out of a possible 600, and Johnson Controls was rated 397 out of a possible 600.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for the mechanical service maintenance contract to the highest rated offer, as presented by Steve Reed, Director of Maintenance.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for maintenance service.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments? We have Mr. Reed here. Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes. All opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next on our list tonight is bid recommendations. And Ms. Williams has that.
Chairman Cross, members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett. I'm here tonight to present on action item J on tonight's agenda, which covers the bid for the provision of milk and related dairy products for school year 2425 for Rockingham County Public Schools' Food and Nutrition Services. A bid proposal for the provision of milk and related dairy products was properly specified and advertised. In addition, it was sent to three firms. Two firms responded with a sealed envelope at bid opening. After review of the bids, it's my recommendation to award the milk bid to the lowest bidder, Maola Milk, for the 2425 school year, with the estimated total annual cost of $308,360.60. Thank you.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the bid for milk for our CPS Food and Nutrition Services to the lowest bidder, as presented by Jennifer Williams, Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the bid for milk for our CPS Food and Nutrition Services to the lowest bidder, as presented by Jennifer Williams, Supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments?
I have comments.
Okay.
I did a little bit of research on what we've been paying PET for the first, or for the last few years. And going back to 2019, the bid that they had put in and what we paid them, well, the bid that they put in was $225,000. Then in 2020, they dropped to $200,000. And then in 2021, they dropped to $175,000. So they dropped $50,000 between 2019 and 2021 with no competition, I don't believe, in those years, nobody bidding against them. And then in the last two years, in 2022, they jumped to $306,000. And then in 23, they jumped to $320,000, likely because of the economy, inflation, and all of those things. So I just, I wanted to say on behalf of PET that I don't believe that those numbers jumped up so high because they were trying to, you know, really pull one over on us because they had no competition and didn't, you know, think that they needed to give us the best price. But just in looking back at those numbers, and I get the way the economy has changed in the last couple of years, but looking back at those numbers, I think both of these bids are too high. And I don't think, I don't think that I have the votes here tonight to make a motion to reject both of these offers. But if I had it, that would be, my thought on the matter is to reject both of them and put them back out to see if Rockingham County Public Schools could get a better amount. Because to me, like, anything over $300,000 is sort of outrageous when just a few years, it was, I mean, there's got to be some sort of balance between $175,000 and $320,000. And really, PET was, you know, $330,000, and with Maola being 308. So to me, both bids are really high. And I get that we have to have milk and do what we need to do. But I'm actually, because I would like to see both of these bids rejected, I'm not going to vote for this tonight. But I just wanted to explain to the public why.
All right.
That's it.
I'd like to address that a little bit. Feed prices have been astronomical. They've doubled in most cases. And the prices that the farmers are getting are not... They've doubled in most cases, and the prices that the farmers are getting are not, milk farmers live on very tight margins, and usually they'll have one year where they make money and another year where they don't make money. And they'll jump around on milk contracts just to make sure that they can, they can stay in business. And we've actually lost quite a few dairy farmers because of the pricing issues. So it likely is quite an increase in the input costs. Fuel has also increased quite a bit. And I've also, you've, you've mentioned that you want to go with a local company. I want to point out that, I can't pronounce them, Maola, is actually supplied in our area by the Virginia-Maryland Milk Co-op, and a number of dairy farmers in our area raise the milk for this, for that, including the Jordans, who sold the Buc-E's land. So, and I'm sure that selling the land, they wanted to keep that in farming, but development, the develop, the pressure from development, reducing our dairy farms, it's a problem. And if, if we want to keep farmers in farming, we're probably just going to have to pay a little bit more. So I just wanted to address that.
And I would also say, I was going to bring that up too after you said that, but, and I, if I understand correctly, Maola uses about seven of our local farms, whereas PET is using about 200. I can't swear on those, but those were the numbers given to me. So, and because we're not going with PET, there are going to be local people that we live and work with and love every day that will lose their jobs here in the valley, not over in Eastern Shores, which is where, from what I understand, we're going to be getting the milk from to be brought into Culpeper, to be brought into the valley. So that's just, you know, when I think about the Shenandoah Valley and local farmers, you know, I, if, hey, I brought up the money thing because money talks, but really, my bigger concern is, is supporting the local, and if I had to choose based on local, I would choose PET just simply because they do use more of our local farmers, so.
Except, PET is owned by Danan, who is a national company and based out of White Plains, New York.
I totally agree, but most of the, you know, the workers in this area, they live in this area, and there will be people that lose their jobs that we know.
Right.
And they've already said they will be cutting local transit drivers, so, I mean, I don't know anybody that works for the milk company down in Eastern Shores.
Right.
It's actually in Strasburg, and I know a couple people, I'll hook you up.
Well, it'll, again, the majority of the milk that we get from PET comes from majority of local, more local farmers than what Maola is providing for us, and that is a concern. That is, that is going to be a concern for us, and it is a concern for mine as well, because I do want to stay with our local farmers, and it's going to have an impact on our local constituents here, and I'm, I do side a lot with Ms. Cave on this issue, and I'm.
Can you cite your source?
I'm hoping, Ms. Lohr, I'm hoping that we can get a better bid from them next year, so I hope this doesn't hurt them too bad, so, any other?
I just have a question, like, this sort of increase, not just with PET, but also with the other company, like, is there another, not just inflation, but are we drinking more milk and eating more ice cream, or?
So the, the pricing, it's based on per half pint, so we get the pricing, so like, for example, we have, so the, the chocolate milk with PET, .31. And so the, some of the fluctuations we saw over the past couple of years, so that, that annual cost, so that's an estimate based on what we think our usage is going to be. So we did see a dip during COVID, when schools were, when, when kids were learning remotely, because we did have to get, we got shelf-stable milk, so we maybe weren't purchasing as much milk during that year. And it is really with the pricing that you mentioned, with the cost of, that farmers face. So that's, that's a little bit of the cost, how the, that annual cost is based on usage, whereas that scent cost has steadily increased. Does that answer it?
All right. Any other questions, comments? Board members, hearing, did we have, did you already read the motion? Sorry, I'm sorry, where are we at? All right, we're discussing, sorry. All those in favor, say yes. Yes. All those opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes three one. Thank you.
Tonight for procurement, it appears. So, good evening, Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. So I'm here to ask you tonight to allow us to use competitive negotiations via an RFP for speech-language pathology services. Over the past few years, we've had a very difficult time hiring speech pathologists, and we've had to start contracting out that service. This will give us the ability to not base our speech services just on price, but also to make sure that they can do them in person, and that they are well-qualified to provide services to our children. So that's my recommendation tonight.
All right.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the request to use competitive negotiations via an RFP in lieu of competitive sealed bids for the speech-language pathology services for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the request to use competitive negotiations via an RFP in lieu of competitive sealed bidding for speech-language pathology services for 2024-2025.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes four oh. Thank you, Mr. Moyers.
Thank you.
Next on our list tonight is Mr. Gregory Gillette.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. Thank you for your time today and for your dedication to the students of Rockingham County. Before you is a resolution regarding annual reimbursement from the Virginia Public School Authority Education Technology Note Series 25. This resolution allows for the spending of $648,000 for RCPS and $26,000 for MTC, beginning July 1, 2024. These funds will be reimbursed in June of 2025, following a bond sale. This initiative is designed to ensure necessary hardware and infrastructure is in place to support Virginia's online testing initiative.
Thank you.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the resolution regarding the annual reimbursement from the Virginia Public School Authority Educational Technology Note Series 25.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I hear a motion, board members?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes four oh. You have another one, Mr. Gillette? You have two more.
Thank you. An IFB to purchase 1,700 Chromebooks for students in grades six, 10, 11, 12 was properly specified on our website and sent to eight firms and three manufacturers. Three firms responded with sealed bids. The lowest bid was Electronic Systems, Inc., offering Lenovo Chromebooks in the amount of $632,621, or $372.13 per Chromebook.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the contract for purchasing 1,700 Chromebooks to the lowest bidder, as presented by Gregory Gillette, Director of Technology.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move, go ahead. I'm having computer problems over here.
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for purchasing 1,700 Chromebooks to the lowest bidder, as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or comments?
Yes. I see you're also going to be presenting information, which is a bid to lease Chromebooks for the same grade levels. Can you just share with the board the difference between why we purchase some and we lease others?
Sure. Actually, I have a statement prepared for the second component of that.
We can wait till that one if you want.
We can, we can, well, basically, the short answer is cash flow.
Okay.
If I were to try and purchase the 2,200 Chromebooks that, that we are looking to lease, I would request an additional $581,000 for the 24-25 fiscal year, but I would request $222,000 less in years 25 through 28, and possibly $55,000 less in the 28-29 fiscal year.
Cash flow.
Cash flow.
Makes sense.
Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes four oh.
Thank you. An IFB, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Go ahead, Mr. Gillette.
Okay. An IFB to lease 2,200 Chromebooks for students in grades six, 10, 11, and 12 was properly specified on our website and sent to eight firms and three manufacturers. Two firms responded with sealed bids. The lowest bid was Electronic Systems, Inc., offering 2,200 Lenovo Chromebooks with financing partner First American Equipment Finance in the amount of $888,1232 over four years, with an optional three-month rental period after four years for $55,577, for a total of $943,513.9.
Chairman Carlson, board members, I recommend awarding the contract for leasing 2,200 Chromebooks for four years and three months to the lowest bidder, as presented by Gregory Gillette, Director of Technology.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, do I hear a motion?
I move, we follow the superintendent's recommendation to award the contract for leasing 2,220 Chromebooks, I'm on the right one, right, for years, for four years and three months to the lowest bidder, as presented by Gregory Gillette, Director of Technology.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any questions or comments?
I have one question. When a student accidentally damages, or however, what is the, I think it's $200 right now, can you explain what the, does this change the amount for Chromebook replacements that students, students would have to pay if there's a cracked screen? Is that covered under insurance, and are insurance rates reduced? Can you just explain that?
Absolutely. So the parents of students in Rockingham County have to sign a mobile device agreement form every year, and the mobile device agreement form is not connected in any way to the price of these currently. We have seen a rise in the cost of the repairs that we do, that we have to pay some, a third party to do. So the, we changed the way that we did the mobile device agreement form from having a flat fee last year to having itemized fees, I'm sorry, we changed from, from charging the actual amount of the repairs last year to a fixed fee for, for certain types of repairs that need to be done for the 24-25 school year. Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me, but, but the reason we did that was to make it a little more fair to somebody who, say, might have a Chromebook from a certain generation of, of Chromebooks, a certain model, that might be more expensive to repair, maybe they're in high school, but their sibling in middle school might have a one that might be cheaper to repair. Cracked screen for 200 bucks on this one, why is it 171 on this one? So we chose to go in the middle of those numbers and just charge one fee.
Is the fee automatically charged regardless of the incident?
The first incident of accidental damage is free. The parents do not pay a dime. Any subsequent accidental damage, they do incur a fee. If there is an intentional damage, which is decided by the principal or another administrator in the building, then they do have to pay the repair fee.
That's per year?
It is, is per year.
That is so good to hear, thank you, because my kid and I both dropped our Chromebooks and accidentally broke them this year, and never received a bill. And the folks at the help desk were amazing, thank you. There, this Chromebook actually has a little flaw in it right here, that if it hits just right, it breaks. And the, the help desk was great, they took it apart, they looked at it, they said, oh, yep, it's that spot, we'll send it back, and they fixed it and made it all right. So, thank you, thank you to help desks, and thank you for all your work on those.
Thank you, I'm very proud of my team.
You should be, they're very good.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes. Yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes four oh. Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Thank you all.
All right, next on our agenda tonight is superintendent's recommendation for supplementary materials.
Chairman Carlson, board members, upon review by the Content Review Committee in accordance with RCPS Policy IIABB, I recommend retaining The School of Good and Evil, The Kite Runner, and My Friend Dahmer, as these books do not contain sexually explicit content, as that term is defined in RCPS Policy IIABA.
All right, we're going to kind of veer away from our motion on this one, because board members, a few of us needed an extra, some extra time to discuss and talk this, so the very first book that you listed tonight, which one was that one?
The School of Good and Evil.
And the other two?
The Kite Runner.
The Kite Runner.
Yep, yes, and My Friend Dahmer.
All right, so, I'm going to make a motion to move tonight that we retain The School of Good and Evil, send that back to the shelves while we hold back The Kite Runner and My Friend Dahmer to be discussed more by the board, and to be voted on at our next school board meeting in July.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any questions, comments?
I'm going to be voting no on that, and that's, that's because we, we have, I feel strongly we need to follow the process that we set up in these policies that we've written. It's not a perfect process, but it's a good process, and I believe in the committee and the recommendations that the committee is making. They are following the policy, and if we're finding that some of these books, we believe as a board, don't belong on the shelves, then we, those need to be taken up in another avenue, not this one. They don't meet the definition for sexually explicit content, and so therefore, my vote tonight is no on your motion, because I believe the motion should be to approve the recommendation in full.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that I, I think the reason for the holding back a month, number one, is to have all board members here, number two, school's not in, so it's not hurting any of the kids by not having, not having those books in there. Where I draw the line at, and it, it's, what has happened is, is that we're blurring lines, and so now we're, even though we have a good policy in place, and I'm like you, and I believe, I believe we did the best that we could, but it's, it's, we're getting into a matter of opinion, and so where it starts at with My Friend Dahmer is there literally one line in the book, like, literally one line that makes you question and say, okay, if I'm being compliant with the policy, does this one line make it meet policy and, and keep it from going back into our libraries? Literally one line. Now, while Kite Runner, who quite honestly, in my opinion, is a much better book than My Friend Dahmer, it's, I mean, its literary value is way above My Friend Dahmer. That book actually has even, you know, a paragraph of description of what I think is sexually explicit. It's not a, it's not a leaves you to wonder what happened, the boy might have been raped, maybe something else happened, like, it's very clear, I had a very clear picture of exactly the stance of both the children when the rape occurred, how he did it, how he was positioned, all of those things. To me, that's very sexually explicit, and so now we have one book that has one line that honestly, I'm like, I don't know if it meets the definition. I think it's worthy of having all board members here to say, and for us to, to take a month to think about it, because we're not in school, to talk about it as board members, like, what do we really think about it? Because, you know, when we start blurring lines, and what are we on the second or the third meeting where we've approved books, like, I want to do this job really well, and I think we have one book with one line that I'm like, it probably, in my opinion, might not meet the definition. We have another book that's got a whole paragraph that I'm like, I'm pretty sure that meets the definition. And so I, I think, and honestly, I believe the committee was, was split on it. So, you know, the policy does say that final approval rests with the school board, and I think when we have a, what's the word, I'm trying to think of. I think when we have a, what's the word, I'm trying to think of, a hesitancy about putting it back, I think it's just worthy of, of all of us to get together. And, and what really has happened is that we don't know in very much time ahead that we can all five get together to discuss, hey, this is what I'm thinking. And, and that, that's gonna change, we'll, we'll start working better in communication with Dr. Shiflett, so that we get those sooner, so that we can think really hard about it. I honestly think we've done a really good job so far. But that's the reason I seconded the motion, and that's the reason that I think that it, that it's worthy of a second look, and that's why we put the line in there, that it's, you know, subject, the final approval is, you know, is, is for the school board. So, that's why I'm voting yes on your motion tonight.
Okay.
If, if I may just add some clarity to this in, in some regards, so, in terms of The Kite Runner, as we had those conversations, there was one member of the committee that, that sort of at the beginning of the conversation said, yeah, I think maybe this meets that definition. And then, the committee, as we always do, have conversations and dialogue and kind of look at other viewpoints, and at the end, we, as a committee, said we didn't think that met the definition of sexual explicit. When it came to Dahmer, I'll make two comments. One, no one on the committee liked the book as far as good literature, but that's not the work of the committee, right? It's looking for sexual explicit. And we never reached a consensus, right? Up until this point, we've always reached a consensus, all seven, seven of them have agreed, but on Dahmer, it was, we had to vote, and it was four to three, four folks feeling like it did not meet the threshold based on where this sentence was located within the book. It's in the note page of the book, it's not actually in the story itself, it was a note taken from the FBI reports, and so that was sort of their rationale, if I could somehow summarize their thinking. And then, three folks felt pretty certain that it, it did meet the definition of sexually explicit, right? And, you know, I just want to say kudos to this content review committee for doing this work, putting in the hours. We looked at my friend, we discussed My Friend Dahmer on two occasions, because we wanted to be thoughtful about the process compared to other books, and try to determine where, where is that threshold of, you know, what is, you know, sexually explicit, and how do we apply that code and that language and policy to the book? So, yeah, so I bring the recommendation just from the committee based on their work. I, I want to be, you know, full transparency. The School of Good and Evil was 7-0, The Kite Runner 7-7-0, but it was a 4-3, sort of a split decision, I guess, for My Friend Dahmer.
So, there was some discrepancy there as well?
Right, yeah, there wasn't 100% there, so.
All right.
From a parliamentary procedure standpoint, we don't have the best motion on the table, quite honestly. And with four of us here tonight, we're, it's gonna be tough to get a majority. My advice would be that we vote on the current motion on the table, and it'll probably get a two, two vote, which means it can't pass. And then, and then I think we should make a new motion to pass the one book, and then make a second motion to pass the other two books. At that point, we can postpone definitely to our next meeting, which will, by parliamentary law, will require us to bring it back up at the next meeting. That's what I would recommend, to get us a vote clean tonight, that's my recommendation.
Okay.
So, we vote, we vote on the motion on the floor.
Which is to, can you read your motion again?
Can you read it back to me?
Oh, it's up there, nice.
All right, I'm moving to retain the school, to retain The School of Good and Evil and to hold The Kite Runner and My Friend Dahmer for board members to review and discuss at the next meeting.
So, we vote on that and probably get a 2-2 vote.
Yeah, we're gonna vote.
And motion, motion does not pass would be the case then.
So, you don't like the wording in that motion? So, you'd like to have another motion?
Two more motions. I mean, because...
I, I don't...
I think Ms., it sounds like Ms. Lord is trying to, well, if we, if this one fails on a 2-2 vote, which is what it's shaping up to do, it'll be tabled.
And come to the next meeting.
Nope, if it, if it fails, then we have nothing.
Right.
Then we make another motion, and we pass one motion, and then put the other one to postpone definitely.
Okay, let's do that.
Does that make sense?
Do you want to make the motion?
Uh, we need to vote on this one first. I can handle making the motions once we, once we, once we get to the next point.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, all those who oppose, say no.
No.
All right, so, motion fails, 2-2. Now...
I move that we, I'm sorry, hold on, what was the official?
2-2.
Voting, what was the official wording that Dr. Shiflett had?
I think you'd be making a motion to retain The School of Good and Evil.
Retain, retain is the wording you used, okay.
School of Good and Evil.
I move that we retain The School of Good and Evil.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, no, all right, motion passes 4-0.
I move that we, wait, let me think, yeah, I move that we retain The Kite Runner.
No.
Yeah, hold on, just trust me on this.
Okay.
I move that we retain The Kite Runner and the, I don't have the, I don't have the, what's the, and My Friend Dahmer. As recommended by the superintendent. And now, we need a second on that.
Second.
Any, now call for discussion.
I'll never explain that to you.
Well, hold on, call for discussion, I'll discuss. Call.
Okay, discussion.
I, I believe that we should postpone this motion until our next school board meeting to give us time to discuss it individually and talk with the superintendent about the, the committee results. Therefore, I move to postpone this motion until, what's our next meeting? July 13th, 2024. Oh, it's July. There's a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. So, I move to retain The Kite Runner and My Friend Dahmer, is that the name of it? Or just Dahmer?
Are you moving to retain them or moving to postpone the discussion?
I'm moving to retain them.
Okay.
And then, we have a second on that, correct? So, that, we have that motion on the floor. And now, I'm moving, so we're not voting on that, we're voting on pushing that off, trust me, it's a Farley thing. We're, we're gonna vote to postpone definitely, which means we're gonna postpone it to our next meeting. And then, it will automatically be on the agenda for our next meeting. So, we have that motion for our next meeting.
All right, so long as we make it clear that we're not...
We're not voting?
Not retaining that.
We're not, we're not retaining it today. We are gonna bring that motion to our next meeting to discuss it at our next meeting, because we have a motion on the floor. We need to postpone, postpone it to a specific date.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
It's, it's what you wanted.
Makes sense, good. All right, but, do we already have a second?
On the, we have a second on the postpone definitely to July, you've got the right date. July 8th.
All right, I have a second.
Okay.
All right, any questions, comments? Are there none, all those in favor, say yes.
Just to be clear, all those in favor of postponing this motion to our next meeting?
Right.
Say yes.
Yep, yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no, all right, motion passes 4-0.
Motion to postpone passes. Just being clear.
Thank you. All right. As you can see, it's, it's not always easy coming to an agreement, but I think we saw some of this also in the committee reviewing the books. And one of the things that we talked about with Dr. Shiflett was just, and Ms. Cave talked about, was just doing a better job as communicating going forward on some of these books, where we can have some of these conversations, and see what we're doing before we come into the meeting, and being able to talk things through. And I think that I, in the future, we'll do a better job in doing that. So, I'm, thank you all for your comments and for what you had to say there. The next on our list tonight is VSBA membership renewal, and I'm, this has been something that we've been talking about, and some board members have been talking about, I'm, for a while now, is not renewing our, our board membership with the VSBA. And I'm going with another group, the SBMA, which is the School Board Member Association. And they now provide policy review, which was really the hang-up on us being able to leave the VSBA. And I'm, they now offer that, and they're, I believe they're doing a really good job with that review, which we want to make sure that we're covered with that. So, tonight, we're gonna be, I'm having a motion to end our renewal with the Virginia School Board Association and joining the SBMA, the School Board Member Association. And I'm, I can set forth that motion tonight if, if y'all would like that.
Yeah, go ahead and make the motion. I probably want to modify it a little bit.
Well, currently, we don't have a second.
But we don't have, so unless we have a second, you're gonna have to make it, I'll...
All right, how, we can, we can kind of cut it a little bit easier if we just want to end our renewal tonight to the, to the VSBA, and then we can, we need to make another motion in public in July with the SBMA, we could, unless you want to do that tonight.
I want to, I want to recommend that we keep the, my motion would be that we end the membership with the VSBA, but that we retain them for policy legislative updates, which is, I think, 3,800 and change. And at the same time, we become members if you choose, because it's an individual, it, this is different with the SBMA or SMBA, because if you decide with the Virginia School Board Association, you're gonna be a member, the whole, the whole team is a member, whereas with the School Board Member Alliance, it's based on individual. And VSBA, I think I'm getting that right, the Virginia School Board Alliance or Association, they charge $11,500 for our membership. It is, for the School Board Member Alliance, it's $250 per member. So, and they have just now started offering legislative updates. What I'm proposing is, what my, what my motion would be, that we, we can end the membership, I'm fine with that, and going with School Board Member Alliance, but I would like to keep both policy pieces for one year. My proposal is we keep policy with VSBA and SBMA for, for one year, just simply to see. And, and I would say, from a strategy standpoint, we'll be able to see what, what is being recommended by both, by both organizations. I think that'll help us in long-term planning, I think that will help us in a lot of ways, but also it offers a level of protection to us as we're kind of dipping out and going into one direction. So, that would be my, my, my motion would be to leave membership, but keep the legislative piece in place, just because we're, we are used to that, we understand how that works, and then we can kind of compare the two over time. So, if you want me to make, I'm, that's the motion I would make, if you make it, can you?
Let's see, what is it called?
What do we?
Question of Privilege? That means can I ask a question, not like related to the meeting room? Can we take a five-minute recess? Or do you need a five-minute recess, or are you good now?
We can take a five-minute, if you want to.
You're gonna take a, like a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Brad, we're good to go. So, in regards to our VSBA membership renewal, which is coming up for July 1st, my motion is that we end the membership with VSBA, and it is, it is not a requirement. Let me make the motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I did that.
Go ahead.
I, I move that we end our membership with Virginia School Board Association, effective July 1. In its place, we will purchase membership with the School Board Member Alliance, but for the next year, I propose that we use both, because both organizations have a legislative policy service. I propose that we keep both. For policy only, just for policy updates. So, my motion is to end membership with VSBA, begin membership with SBMA, but keep the legislative policy updates for both.
Okay. Any questions, comment, or a second, I'll second it, I'll second it. Any questions, comments?
Yes, I understand that you guys want to...
Yes, I understand that you guys want to leave the V S B A because it leans a little farther left than our community, truly does. However, it's a lobbying organization, and we control what they say. We send delegates to discuss what the talking points should be. And we, we, we vote on what those talking points should be, as long as we're members. When we're no longer members, we no longer have a voice, we no longer have a vote. But they are a big, big machine, and they will continue to lobby. And they have the ears of a lot of politicians. And if we're not there to provide the conservative voice, no one else will be. And I think that, for if no other reason, that's a good reason to stay and make our voices heard. Because yes, I agree, there have been several talking points that they've pushed in recent years that are not as conservative as I would like them to be. But we can change that if we stay part of it. If we, if we get out, they will continue to have the weight that, that they have, but we won't have a voice. And we can also network with other school boards and talk to them and help get them on our side, if you will, if we stay. If we are outside, we don't have seats at the table anymore. And that's a dangerous place for us to be in with a smaller lobbying group. Additionally, the new one is a startup, and I definitely support Ms. Horst's reasoning of keeping both of them so that we can see what we like and see if, and because I'm a little bit afraid, we haven't seen a whole lot out of the new group, doesn't mean they're not going to be fantastic, but we don't know. It's, it's kind of like I've been working with these Ag Science Fair kids, and they're like, I don't know what to do for the, the interview, because they're, they've never seen it before. They're walking blind. Once they get a year under their belt, they'll be great. But they don't know yet. They don't know what they don't know. So that makes me nervous, too. And there's a lot of things that they provide. Training sessions, legal updates, workshops for us, lots of good stuff that we will not be allowed, that we won't have privy to anymore if we leave. So I encourage my, my fellow board members to stay with the V S B A at this point in time and revisit it in a year.
I'm, I'll, thank you, Ms. Laura, I appreciate that. I would disagree in the fact that we, there are, as school boards are around Virginia that are flipping over to a more conservative boards, you're seeing more people leave the V S B A. And I'm, with, we do see a networking between I'm, those boards to find a better way. And we also, as board members, have relationships with our local legislators, that we're able to talk with them, tell them things that we're seeing that are good, that are not so good, and for them to lobby for us in Richmond as well. So I understand your point and what, what you're saying there, but I'm, I think that we're going to be just fine in, in leaving the V S B A. And the training part, we're, we're going to have not only opportunity with S B M A for training opportunities, but there's other groups that we can go through to get our training. And I want to encourage all board members to make sure that, you know, you're keeping up on your training as board members. But I think it's going to be a good thing. We just saw, I think it was Orange County that left the V S B A, Warren County's left the V S B A, there's, I think, three other counties that's left the V S B A, Bedford. And I think there are more to come. I don't think that we're going to see Rockethambeau be the last one. But there's more to come on, on the, the leaving of the V S B A. So hopefully, they take, I'm, hopefully, they, they see this as well and take notice of that. So I, I think Ms. Horst tonight for your motion, and we'll, we'll see how that goes with the policies, and we'll go from there. Ms. Cave, do you have anything to add? Okay, all right.
I do want to add one more thing, just to reassure you. They do have trainings. I've already attended, so when I was elected in December, I think it was, that I attended the, maybe it was November, the V S B A's annual conference. I attended that remotely, because I wasn't able to go and be in person. But I also had an opportunity to attend the School Board Member Alliance's annual conference with Ms. Cave and Mr. Cross. And I was so impressed with the training and the knowledge and the information that they gave to school board members. And I know that they're going to continue, continue that good training and that good education piece. And so that's why I feel, I've seen kind of both. I went to a recent V S B A training, Dr. Shiflett and I were down there for a day, down in Richmond for a day for a recent training. So I've kind, I've, I have seen both, and I still feel comfortable going with the S B M A, which is why I'm comfortable voting yes to, to work it this way, but knowing that they are new. And I don't want to be, I, I want to be able to compare what they're saying. Because if there are no differences, there, there are no differences. But I do think that we're going to see some policy changes, just reflecting how we might want to, as a conservative board, move forward. So that's, that's why I made that motion. But I do want to reassure you that I do think they do have really good training.
Yes, and I just want to reiterate that my biggest concern is the way to make a liberal organization more liberal is for all the conservatives to leave. And this, this organization might lean slightly liberal now. As we all leave, it will go even farther. And that, they're, they're recognizable. They have the ear of the politicians. And we're losing our voice, our well, our long-established, well, well-established voice there.
I would say, how, how was, how's that voice worked out for us over the years?
Well, we've gotten a lot of policy from them. And there were some things that, when I came on the board, I was like, oh, I don't know about that. And they've pulled back on. They have, they have, it, and it just depends on what the members ask them to do. It's member, it truly is member-driven. And if all the members leave that think one particular way, then you're going to lose that, that two-sidedness of it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, all opposed, say no.
No.
All right, motion passes three, one. And Dr. Shiflett, do you have next?
Yes, Justin, you want me to go ahead and give the budget amendment? Okay, yes. So the, when you guys, at the beginning of the meeting, made a motion to amend the agenda, this was for this item here, budget amendment. So over the past few weeks, Rockethambeau County Public Schools has, has received notice that we will be receiving additional money from the state, as well as grants for school safety resource officers. The additional state money and grant money, and grant monies total approximately one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand and nine hundred and thirty-five dollars in additional funds that were not budgeted for in the original fiscal year 2025 budget. Below is a budget amendment for your approval. This amendment will appropriate additional state funds received from the state, from the official state budget for the fiscal year 2025, passed on May 13th, 2024, and reduce our request from the Rockethambeau County School Board of Supervisors from a total of seventy-nine million eight hundred sixty-six thousand dollars, and five thousand and ten dollars to seventy-eight million eight hundred sixty-six thousand and five hundred and ten dollars. So we are reducing our request from the Board of Supervisors from six million dollars to five million dollars. So my recommendation would be to approve that budget amendment.
Board members, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to follow that recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve a budget amendment that will appropriate additional state funds received for fiscal year 2025 after the budget was originally approved.
All right.
Second?
Ms. Laura, second? All right, any, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor? All good.
I got a question. I'm full of questions, I'm sorry.
All right.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. We've gotten some additional funds, we're going to reduce, it's more than we had anticipated. So we're going to reduce what we've asked of the Board of Supervisors, but we still have more than what we anticipated.
Yes, yes.
And we're going to be able to meet some additional needs, increasing and growing needs in a couple of areas with this additional money. So we're not actually losing money. This isn't a budget cut.
Correct. And so, you know, the, the Board of Supervisors was really gracious to us when we had asked them for an additional six million dollars in additional funds this year. And at that time, we did not anticipate this additional revenue from the state, because the state budget had not been passed. So since the state budget was passed, we, we get some more dollars, there's some more grant money that we receive. We, we were not aware of any of those things. And so now, we can go back to our Board of Supervisors and say, we really appreciate the support that you were willing to give us, stepping up to the plate, helping us out in a really tight spot. We don't need the six million, we can be okay with the five million. There will still be some extra dollars that we didn't budget for to address some, some, you know, some concerns that's come up over the last couple of months since the budget's been approved. As I shared with a couple of you individually, last week, I got an email from Mr. Chris Bryan, our Director of Special Education, making me aware of some needs of some students who just moved into our schools, that we need to increase some staffing. So that money would be dedicated to, to, you know, to hire additional personnel, really focused on special ed, reducing some class sizes, where some numbers at the elementary level are creeping up, look at our E L needs, and just trying to use those dollars to, you know, help get the supports in place for our students and our teachers.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm having a hard time following this, I'm so sorry. So additional state money and grant money totals approximately one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars in additional funds. But then at the bottom, it says one million other, revenue of other state, one million two hundred and sixty-five dollars, two hundred sixty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. How come those are different? Thank you.
So it's a difference of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Which is the grant money that we receive for the S R O officers. And the reason we don't have to ask for an amendment for that is because now, instead of spending the money on the S R O officers that we had budgeted for, we will get grant money in lieu of, so we can just spend that money, another, allocate it somewhere else. So I don't need board approval to spend that somewhere different.
Okay.
We can talk some more about it, it is very confusing.
I think the, at the end of the, the day, when it comes down to what does it mean? So of that one point eight million, right, we're saying to the Board of Supervisors, keep a million, and then we'll have over eight hundred thousand dollars to address our personnel needs.
Correct.
Will that fully address our personnel needs?
What do you mean by fully?
I mean, do we need the other million dollars, too?
I, I, I would say, to, to take care of our personnel needs, we do not need the one point eight million. But we have looked at some personnel needs, and we feel pretty confident with the eight, the eight hundred thousand dollars, we can meet, meet those needs.
I, I feel like some of the hardship with the budget this year has been this growth that has been happening in our county, and our Board of Supervisors are aware, well-aware of, you know, when you approve a sub-development. And it, it brings in, and it starts to bring into our school system more kids than you had anticipated. And then some of these kids have additional needs that we weren't expecting. I think our Board of Supervisors is well-aware of that, and that's part of what has made, I think, this budget cycle a little bit tricky, because that number seems to be changing a lot, right? Like, we learned earlier this year in January that our special education needs and our E L needs have increased by fourteen and sixteen percent over the last year. So that's, that's something we, you try to plan ahead, we try to think ahead, but we don't always, we don't always nail it. And so I, I feel like, yeah, if you're comfortable, Dr. Shiflett, with that, if we get into another situation where we need to go back to the Board of Supervisors and say, we need, you know, an extra two hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever it is, because we have these additional personnel requests, or whatever, I feel like we have good, good rapport and good relationship, and we can go to them and ask if we get in another pinch. But that's only if you feel comfortable with that number.
Yeah, no, we, we feel comfortable with that number. And again, I appreciate the Board of Supervisors being able to support us earlier in the year when, when we requested six million dollars, and that was, really wasn't their intentions at the time. And I don't want to get maybe into, to too many of the details here and sidetrack us, but, you know, so one of the areas is, is we always have a margin for salaries and benefits. So we have over two thousand employees, so we cannot determine exactly what each employee will, will cost as far as, you know, their salary, and whether or not they take the benefits, like health insurance. And so it's always, you know, Justin's best educated guess, right? And so there's a margin there, we have some wiggle room. And that allows us throughout the year, when there's a need that arises, whether it's special ed, or an enrollment for a kindergarten class, we always have some extra dollars that we can hire staffing throughout the year. What was really sort of uncomfortable for us is after we approved our budget this spring, we already became aware of needs in April and May, that we're, we would have to already dip into that margin and to get us through next year, right? We don't like to dip into that margin until about September or October, right? We want to get into the school year before we start kind of hitting, hitting that little extra safe space for dollars. And so this additional funds will allow us to not, not dip into that so soon.
So what do our class sizes look like for the coming year? And teacher, like, are we, are we in good shape, or are we?
So the, the one place I can't really speak to is kindergarten. So some of them may still be enrolling, but part of this eight hundred thousand dollars would be to hire, I think, four elementary teachers, three or four elementary teachers, because there are few spots that are still a little high. But if kindergarten enrollments, if they're, if they stay as they traditionally have, we should be good with our elementary enrollment, very good, middle school enrollment's really good, so.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no, motion passes four oh. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you.
All right, that pushes us off to our informational items. And our first on the list tonight is Ms. Lisa Kaufman in Secondary School Counseling Program.
Good evening, Chair Cross, members of the board, Dr. Shiflett. Thank for you, thank you for the opportunity to present a little information. You guys have just had a lot of action. So this is just for information. So I was able to present with the team on Behavioral Threat Assessment, and then the Elementary School Counselor Program, and not to be left out, the Secondary School Counseling Program. And so with me this evening, although I would love to bring all of the school, secondary school counselors with me, that might add to your meeting time. And so this evening, Jessica Ashby, who is a school counselor at Montevideo Middle School, and Lanay Mahagan, who is a school counselor at Turner Ashby, are going, we are going to present together on the Secondary School Counseling Program. And there will also be, there's, you'll hear the voice of a very special guest, because we're also going to talk about the Career Coach Program, which is associated with our school counseling program at each one of the high schools. But it is now summer vacation, so not everybody was available, not all the members of the team were available to be here live in person. Next, oh, just kidding. All right. So like we kicked off the last presentation, just a reminder that each one of our school counselors has at least a master's degree. They have to have graduated from an accredited university prep program, college or university prep program, and complete internship and practicum experiences, kind of analogous to student teaching, but they have to log so many hours. And many of them have other certifications even on top of that, like a licensed mental health professional, or some of them have other certifications, too. Like licensed professional counselor, right, ladies? These are the seven chunks of time that the Virginia General Assembly has said count for direct services. So each, they are the same from the Elementary School Counseling Program. And we're going to talk And we're going to talk a little bit, we're going to use them in the same way we use them for the elementary school presentation, so that you can kind of see how the slices have the same labels of the pie chart of time, but the slices are different sizes, right? So whereas a typical elementary school counselor would spend more time, maybe in curriculum lessons and activities, the high school counselors probably spend more time in appraisal and advisement. Take it away. Thank you.
So I thought I would speak a little bit about individual counseling and what that looks like at the middle school level. We allow students, teachers, administrators, and parents to schedule appointments with us, so it's not just coming from a student saying, I want to come see you. There's a little bit of give in there. We focus on short sessions to return them to class and ready to learn. So we also try not to get them out of core classes. If they have something going on, we'll try to get them out of something a little less sticky. But again, really quick, individual counseling in the office may look like exploring some coping skills to help with anxiety, exploring what a positive friendship should look like, and then usually how to treat one another and just be respectful. We also have about 20% of the time will discuss career planning and scheduling with them as well.
So individual counseling at the high school level covers a broad spectrum of topics and can range from helping students with their schedules to supporting students experiencing anxiety during the school day. Ideally, these sessions are solution focused, and the goal is ultimately to get the students back to class.
To speak to small group counseling, to attend a small group session in the middle school, and I do believe in the high school, we start by discussing it one-on-one with the student. Then we go to the parents and say what we would like to do, and then we send a form home for the parents to sign and the students to return. We usually keep these small groups under 10 because 10 middle school kids would not, you know, it's not going to be controllable. My personal favorite small group that we did this year was on positive friendships with peer mentors, and we had four eighth grade students and four sixth grade students. And we worked on building confidence in the eighth graders and helping the sixth graders learn the building and just kind of come together and see what middle school is about.
One group that I ran at the high school this year was called Tackling Anxiety, and it was with a small group of students that were connected with me either through administration, parents, or the students came to me themselves and expressed struggling with this emotion. I met with them four times during advisory or lunch over the course of the semester, and we covered topics such as understanding anxiety, self-care, grounding techniques, and understanding cognitive distortions.
Crisis counseling looks a little bit different because it's usually a crisis. So you're kind of thinking in the moment, you don't have a lot of time to plan, so we have to lean back on what we know. This can be, a crisis can be the breakup of friendships, it can be gossip, it can be something going on with social media, it can get into self-harm, suicidal ideation. So we have threat assessments that we do, and they're done pretty similarly in all the schools across Rockingham County. And the threat assessment doesn't come into play unless a counselor or an admin see fit for that to happen. Okay. School counselors connect students and parents to resources for support. So that's going to look like when a student is coming to the counseling office and they are having extreme anxiety or showing extreme depression or some kind of mental health need, we will connect the parents to outside help. And that often looks like connecting them to an equine therapist, a mentor, outpatient therapy, occupational therapy, and it's all based on that student's level of need. We also link families to services in the community. We have a backpack program at our school. We give them a list of local food banks, churches, family counselors in the area, group therapy. We've referred or connected to parent coaches and parent mentors as well. And then if the family continues to still need help, we will do a child-specific meeting where everyone comes to the table, and that's CPS and the courts. And this will just provide and help us process through the next steps that the family needs.
Middle school and high school counselors both provide students with information that's necessary for that school year. Here I have an example of a lesson that the Career Coach and I both present to 11th graders at the beginning of their junior year. So as you can see, we cover topics of how they can connect with their counselor, understanding graduation requirements, signing up for SATs, scholarships, college and career exploration, so that they're informed and they feel prepared for the year.
For appraisal and advisement, we have been using Major Clarity. It's a computer program. We assess the students and explore their abilities, interests, skills, and achievements to help them make decisions and develop immediate and then long-term goals. They do Major Clarity in elementary, middle, and high school, and it will follow the student through. And of course, they can take the assessments again and again. They don't have to just be stuck on the first assessment. It takes about 10 minutes to complete, and then it breaks down. And in the middle school level, we go into the classroom and do these with them, and it comes up on their Chromebook, and they go through clever and get to Major Clarity. I've added my personality assessment so that you can see that it's broken down in five and six different ways, and then it also shows you the learning styles for the student. So it's very helpful for them to have something visual to see and understand. The next slide is where it will take the student, once they have decided and picked the categories that they're interested in. So mine is psychology and teaching, which was not surprising to me, but you can see how accurate it is. I thought it was very fascinating. But we can help the students explore what best suits them and then the career path that they want to take if we're going to explore going to college or MTC. And then it steps up to the next level with high school with the students.
Yeah, so at the high school level, we continue the work that the middle school does with students in Major Clarity, so their work is reflective of the growth and the changes that the students go through over the course of their years in school. The kind of cumulative piece of work that Major Clarity produces, I guess you could say, is the Academic and Career Plan, which is, it's actually a three-page document, which includes the student's career goals, a plan of study that the student has selected for themselves. And then this document is periodically emailed to parents so that they can see the work that their students are doing.
Meredith Garber, who is one of our career coaches, she is at Spotswood High School. She could not be here this evening, but she recorded a short, it's only two minutes, presentation. The video is linked to the slide. Would you mind, Greg, queuing up the video? And she will narrate from the career coach perspective much better than I ever could.
I am Meredith Garber. I'm the career coach at Spotswood High School. Each of the Rockingham County high schools does have a career coach present. And we are there to help with students and their planning for post-secondary education. So that could be going to a four- or two-year college/university technical school, a certification program, the military, or the workforce. We do serve all students in all grade levels in the high school with a focus on middle-majority students, which are those who have a GPA between a 2.0 and a 3.0, first-generation EL, and economically disadvantaged students. Examples of services coaches provide are career assessments and career exploration, guidance on programs of study, help with college and financial aid application processes, interviewing skills, cover letter development, and soft skills such as communication, problem-solving, and work ethic. For consultation, collaboration, and referrals, coaches work within the school, getting to know each student and their needs through interactions with the student themselves and with their teachers or administration, brainstorming ideas to assist students, and referring students to others that can help them, such as their teacher, counselor, or nurse. Outside of the school, we work with local employers for job placement and career exploration, healthcare workers, citizenship services, and support services for students who have basic needs such as clothing or meals. During appraisal and advisement, coaches are involved in assessments, credentialing, job and college application assistance, the FAFSA resumes, experiential learning opportunities, and parent outreach. In addition to the topics previously mentioned, coaches are in the classroom, offering lessons on budgeting, how students are impacted by AI, and the limits of ChatGPT, the realities of work or college campus life, and employer visits related to coursework such as medicine, engineering, and real estate. All of these services working together are meant to provide comprehensive, meaningful assistance to our students.
So Meredith was sorry that she couldn't be here with us this evening, but the next best thing is for her to narrate those things so we don't lose any of those details. And the career coaches are a great partnership with our CPS and Blue Ridge. They are Blue Ridge employees, they work within our high schools, and they are an amazing support, especially to anybody who had contact with the FAFSA this year. There where it was a little bit of a bumpy process is a little bit of an understatement. And our career coaches were right there with families, with students, to help them make sure that they were maximizing what was available to them and to connect them with their post-secondary options. One of the misconceptions about our career coaches is that they only work with kids who are going to Blue Ridge. That is not true. They do work with students who go to Blue Ridge, but they're there to assist students and their families with whatever is next, whatever is the post-secondary something that is next for those students. And Meredith covered that one. So finally.
So we talked a lot about program planning and school support and what we did over the last school year and what we're going to do moving forward. Over the past year, our counseling office focused on almost 200 English language learners and how we could best support them at Montavideo. So we applied for and received a $5,000 grant from Merck, and we have used that to create and help those students. We also built an English language learner peer mentorship with our eighth graders to help our new sixth graders come in, and they were in some of the exploratory classes, like they would go to FFA with them and help them take the tests, and then they'd be able to return to another class. So the teacher was also able to get those kids into those exploratory classes and have someone in there speaking their language. We had Ukrainian, Russian, Arabic, and Spanish in those classes. That program went really well. This allowed our students moving into the country to have a native language speaker in the room with them and to build friendships with them. And this helped build a positive community in our building. MMS, we have spent the school year fostering a diverse community of creativity, growth, and respect.
On the final slide, you'll see some quotes from some of the people who work within our buildings. You may notice some of their names, and then, of course, there is an anonymous one that represents a lot of what parents communicate about the support that they find from our school counseling programs. I know the font is small, but any questions about our secondary school counseling program?
Well, I think you guys are both coming tonight and speaking to the board and sharing this information with us really gives us a great idea of what's going on, and we're able to learn exactly what all you guys, your job is doing there. So thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me.
The program that you spoke about at the end there with the EL mentor, is that at all the middle schools?
No, we, I'm sorry. We just started it this year. It was just an idea we had because we had so many English language learners, and we were getting caught up on things like, how can we help them take the test? How can we get them into the CTE programs that will help them in the future? And so we sent out a survey to teachers, to our seventh to eighth grade rising students, and we said, who is a good leader? Who is able to speak different languages? And then we interviewed them like a job process. And so that's how we got down to the four. And then, of course, they rotated with our sixth graders, so they went to four different electives over the course of a year, and it was one of their electives they gave up. But they also got to see them in the building, and they got to be involved in FFA, and they had someone there to help them. It really worked out great.
That sounds amazing. Because I know I've been in classes where I thought, I was like, oh, I think I saw that at one of the middle schools, but it wasn't Montavideo. So it was kind of organically happening if it worked out. But if it didn't work out, you know, or if maybe the one that was trying to speak English for the group didn't work out so well. So this is a great way to do that. Thank you. Thank you for looking into that and piloting that. That's awesome.
We were able to give them grades for helping, and I think holding them accountable just kept them at the next level. And again, the teachers recommended them, so they were already kids that were leaders.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list tonight is Ms. Becky Tenel.
I do have a stack. Chair Cross, members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett, I do have a very big stack here. And I think I had told you that that was kind of coming as we were reading through things. A lot of the policies in the first section you see there are minor, like we've talked about before. The second set of policy changes are more, wouldn't say substantial, but there's more to read there as far as changes. So there's a lot. I'm happy to answer any questions if you look down through there and there are any that kind of stick out to you that you're just wondering about. So these are informational, and they'll come back for action on July.
I have a few, but I don't have to go first, Mr. Cross. JFCF is the policy on, let me make sure I get this, alcohol and drugs in school.
Yes.
I feel like we still need to hear back from the Student Conduct Committee and have an update before we even take a vote on that one. I'm not sure that there's really any changes in that one right now, but I think there will be.
There's a minor change in there. It just defines controlled substance, but you're right. I mean, we could hold it, knowing that that's pending.
I feel like we're going to have more information on that particular one coming, and if it's, I looked at the last revision, which was in 2022. So I think we're okay to wait a couple of months until we get the, and I'm hoping, Dr. Shiflett, you can speak to when we might have a student conduct policy update.
Yeah, so we have a work session next week. School board.
School board.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we will be bringing some recommendations or at least having discussions about what direction the board would want to go in terms of student conduct. Yes.
Okay.
So that'll be part of that agenda next week.
Hey, can I say something before you move on?
Yeah.
Because that was on my, that was on my list too, because it was just a minor change, and it was under the controlled substance. And I see where, you know, it's adding in the red there for purpose of the policy, the term controlled substance includes any, then it gives the new language. But it says, as all are defined in Virginia law. My concern was that it deleted all of the stuff after that, like the non-prescription or over-the-counter medication not being taken for legitimate medicinal purposes. So is that saying that now we're going to allow students to have?
I could.
You know what I'm saying?
I could ask Dr. Aldifer, but I think that what they were intending to do is, that is, all of those things are defined in Virginia law. So rather than every time there's a new substance that comes out, we have to change our policy, we just say, as defined in Virginia law.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you needed to check on it, that was okay. But if you're saying that Virginia state law covers all of those things, and that's why we don't list them individually, that's okay. But I didn't want to, I didn't want people to look at it and go, oh, well, we can bring this stuff now. Because that's what it looks like.
It just means less changes. And there's another policy that's like that too, that I think it might be the fire drills because sometimes that changes from time to time, and it doesn't mean that we don't have, still have the requirement. It just means we're going to follow the requirement as defined in Virginia law so that we don't have to constantly change our policies. We do need to know what they are so that we can implement them, but then we don't have to make major changes. Yeah.
Policy JED is on student absences, excuses, and dismissal. And I noticed in that one, there's just a couple of minor changes. One, scrolling to find it, talks about prearranged absences and defines that a little bit differently. And then another change I noted was chronic non-compliance with school attendance may result in consequences such as after-school detention slash attendance recovery. And so I wanted to maybe talk further about some of, we have a policy, but we are also coming out of COVID where absences were wild. And I'm looking at our Chronic Absences of All Types report here, and I noticed, like, we've got a lot, we've made some tremendous progress in this area this school year. Are there additional things that we need to add to this policy to firm that up a little bit? What are our? What are our, what are our principals saying they need as far as ensuring we have the support they need in policy for attendance? Are there additional things we need to be pushing in there? I mean, I don't know that chronic absences has to do with student conduct, but it, they're kind of related.
Right. Well, and I do think some of the after-school detention and attendance recovery has been very helpful to this chronic absenteeism. And when we get to that report, yeah, I circled the highlight, how we have reduced chronic absenteeism. And if you look at some of the schools and what they've done, so I think that piece there, attendance recovery is huge for that.
I think the verdict is still out on whether or not the state's going to allow that next year. I'm going to be taking over that role, but Marcy Williams is not sure. I think that that is something that is going to be difficult for us because I don't think the state decided we could do attendance recovery until maybe December. And then we hurried up and did it, which was great. But we're hoping to have an indication sooner that we can do recovery so that we can start it in the fall. So we're not just, you know, that, we're catching kids up as they're missing instead of waiting to the spring and then saying, you've missed 17 days, and now you need to come to this many days of recovery. Because we're not just asking for recovered absences, we're asking for recovered academic missed work. You know, it's not, it's more than just the number. But I would love to see that stay in the policy. I don't know if, I don't know what the state will do about that. I mean, I, I'm not sure if everybody in the state has made as much progress as Rockingham has. I haven't seen a lot of data yet, but we have made some great strides, for sure.
Are we close with these numbers here for our percentage of chronic students for this school year? Are we close to what pre-COVID?
I'm not sure I know the answer to that.
Where are we on that? What, what did 2018, 19 look like?
I could get that for you.
Yeah, we can get that information and do a comparison.
I'd like to see that comparison to see, I mean, I don't know if we're back to what is considered typical or if this is still riding a little high. I mean, and it concerns me, you know, as a classroom teacher, if you're not there, you can't learn. It's hard, it's, and it's hard to, to substitute meaningful classroom discussions and group work and all of those things if you're not present. And so attendance is a really big deal for our, for a lot of our kids. You got to be there. My, my next question is on policy IAA, which is just, it's a copy of notification of learning objectives. It looks like we've just gone through and we, I guess this is one of those VSBA recommendations to change the capital letters from lowercase school board to uppercase school board. And I've had this explained maybe twi, this is the second time I've, I've heard of this, and now I see our policies are changing. My understanding it is that capital S, capital B for school board refers to the Department of Education, their school board, the school board of the Department of Education. Whereas anytime we see, and that's in Virginia code, and anytime we see lowercase s and lowercase b, it's referring to the local school board. That's my understanding. So I, I'm not sure we want to change that. We might need to check in with our lawyer on that one because I, I believe the way the Virginia code is written, anytime you see capital S, capital B, it's talking about, like, the state school board. And they denote the lowercase s, lowercase b for local school board. That way, we know whose, what, whose authority it is. Is that state of, state of Virginia's authority, or is that relegated to the local school board? So that would be my question on that one.
What if it's the Rockingham County School Board? Then it's all caps, right? I mean, like, not all caps, but all the first letters are capitalized because it's a proper noun, right?
I guess I'm just asking what the distinction is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some clarification because I'm not sure. I think I was in part of one of those conversations, maybe where they were talking about how they denote the Board of Education versus the school board. So we'll, we'll get some clarification on that. That'll be something we'll maybe check with Daniel.
Okay. Do that.
I still have more.
Okay.
It's a lot of policies. I'm really sorry. There's, there's a lot happening here. Okay, policy EBCB, which is on safety drills. I am asking, I, I think I would like to find out if it is, I know all of our school safety plans have an evacu, an off-site evacuation plan, and we talk about it at faculty meetings, but I cannot stress the importance of doing an actual practice drill of evacuation. My, my reason for this is we can look at our recent situation down at Elkton Middle School. And when you have an evacuation that has to happen, our school, everybody does a phenomenal job. It's an all-hands-on-deck situation, but I think that we should have practiced those things in advance. And I know it's something we did before COVID, elementary schools, middle high perhaps did those. And I want to be careful not to step on security issues here. But what I, what I want to share is, you know, I've been in an elementary school where we did do off-site evacuation drills every other year. And we dismissed, so we, it was planned, it was set up, we notified the parents, and that gave the parents the opportunity to practice what it would be like picking up their children off-site, what that dismissal procedure looks like. And I think when you're in a situation like what we were in earlier this year at Elkton Middle School or any other potential safety issue where we have to do an off-site evacuation, it does help the kids, it does help the stu, like, students, it helps teachers, it helps all of the people, all of the moving parts of communication, how are we getting transportation, how are we communicating to parents, all of those things. I think it just helps to have a practice drill. That's, that's my, and I noticed we don't have, we have tornado drills. We, we must practice those, those are state-of-Virginia things. We have regulations on fire drills, we have hurricane, you know, we have all the things. But the one that we don't require is an off-site.
I know that we do.
An off-site practice. It, it might be something some principals do, but not all.
Sarah, now, are you talking about with students? Because do we, because do we currently do that with staff at certain schools? I think.
As far as, as being on as SRO, we always, of all the schools that I worked with, and I worked at three out of four districts, we did every two years an off-site evacuation drill and was a part of that. Now, the only thing we didn't do was have parents pick up there. So the principal was always involved with that, the SRO, all the teachers, the nurses, school nurses had to know where everything was at. So we did practice going to those off-site places and having everything put in place to go from there, but we didn't release from there. So, but I'm, I think we do that right now, every two years for every school, but we don't do the last part that you're talking about and actually releasing from that with parents there.
I think the practice that we had, and Mr. Reed might be able to help define, too, because he's on the school audit team. And we knew, like, as a former administrator, I knew I had to show evidence of that in my school audit. We did an off-site one year, and then the next year, we did the off-off-site. Like, at John C., we would go to the church. But then we always, our next location was to go to J. Frank Hilliard. So that's sort of the cycle we were on. I, I don't know that it's in policy. I understand why you would like to see it in there, especially since everything else is outlined. But I would say that it's a practice. Mr. Reed usually tells us in the fall, don't forget, like, when we have our admin meeting in, in August, don't forget, this is how many fire drills you have to do, this is how many, you have to do this many lockdowns. A lot of people go from a fire drill into an evacuation. But I, I don't know of anybody either that's done the parent sign-out part. And I've been, I've been there with that, and that is a challenge. Yeah.
That's a big job accounting for all the kids and then getting them all home from there. And I can imagine that that's in a live situation, that is very stressful for everyone.
I think this is a great example, too, of a VSBA policy that I would like to see the parallel policy from the SBMA if they have one. Because if we were to add in to policy, and that's one thing, I think, as a school board, we've wanted to move away from all these practices that we do because they're not quite as dependable as policies. I, I would be curious just to see that parallel because if we add in the off-site, then it becomes an RCPS policy, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, but I would be curious to see the parallel if they have one.
So you want to hold on that one? You, well, how would you all like for me to move? I mean, I know you're not taking action, but is there anything that is a board that you would like to see? Would you like to see me work on some language to put it in there and make it a Rockingham policy? Is there anything that you would like for me to do, or do you want me to just pull it?
I would, I would like to see some language added that we are going to, we're going to move it out of best practice, and we're going to put it in policy that we're going to do this. And that, I think the only reason why we maybe have stopped doing that maybe a little bit is just because we're still coming out of COVID, right? We weren't packing kids on buses and transporting them, and things, things were just a little bit different during COVID. But now I think we need to get back to some of those safety drills. And I don't know that I think it has to be every other year. I think once in your school career in that building, right? So for elementary school, one time in your, in your, in your journey there. Once every, yeah, and if you're in middle, I mean, once every three to, three to four years or something, because middle school could look different. Yeah.
Are you talking about, I'm doing the off-site evacuation drill itself?
Yeah.
Or the actual pickup there?
I think just having a required off-site drill would be step one. If principals would want to take it a step further and have their staff practice doing dismissal procedures, you can leave that to the division or to the, to the building principal or to whatever our superintendent recommends there for that. But I think we need to have, we need to include that in our safety drills.
I'm, we've, we definitely have a lot of homework to do when it comes to looking through these policies that are coming up for action item next month. But in the meantime, we will get with, Shiflett, with any concerns that we have, like Sarah's talking about on this one as well, and, and have something ready for you to go.
And I welcome you to contact Becky and say, here, I've got a question about this, or what about that? But I mean, and I, I hear, I hear your comment, right? Maybe it should be part of the policy that we do an off-site evacuation every three years or however. But I think that has been the norm for the last few years. When I was at South River, we did it, you know, a couple of years, but we never dismissed from there. We always, we, we went to the fire department, and we've always, you know, brought the kids back. So that's taken it a step further.
Extra.
Yeah, and that is a good thing when we get our safety manager hired. Our safety dude.
That's, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for.
It's okay. Ms. Gabe, did you have policies you wanted to talk about? Okay.
Ms. Lor? All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out tonight and staying late.
Thanks.
All right. I'm court members, we have attendance report for May of 2024. That's, information's in your packet. We also have a financial review for May 2024. That information is also in your packet as well. This leads us tonight.
I just have a quick question about the attendance report since we opened it. Who generates that?
Marcy Williams. And Debbie Graham helps her. And I, and I would just call out, if you would look at that sheet, chronic absences of all types through, this is the end of May, so it didn't go to the end of the school year. But you can see last year, at that point in time, 21% of our students were chronically absent. This year, 11%.
And I feel like that is super down. I, I feel like I haven't, I don't remember seeing the number that low in the past.
But we will go back and look and see what it was in previous years, like, pre-COVID, right? Because it really got really high. I mean, if you look at those numbers at the high school last year, Broadway from 28 to 11, East Rock from 36 to 19, Spotswood from 25 to 14, Turner-Ashley 23 to 16, Elkton Middle School from 29% to 8.
That's a drop.
So they, our principals and administrators have worked really, really hard to make this happen, and our parents have stepped up, right? I mean, they've done well to get, you know, get the kids to school and make it a priority. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we don't have any public comments on, no one signed up for that tonight. And so that will lead us to our school board questions or comments, and I'll start with Ms. Lor.
Well, we don't have any students here tonight. I guess just happy summer, everyone, and thank you. I guess I do want to share, the MTC Rock the Ridge concert was last, weekend before last, and I think they raised about $20,000 for our students. So yay them and yay to our community for really stepping up and supporting our schools, especially MTC. So thank you all who participated.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurst. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Dr. Shiflett?
Yes, just wanted to highlight, so our school board work session next Tuesday, the 18th, from eight, I think it's eight, eight to 11:30. And again, part of that work session, we'll be talking about student, the student code of conduct and, and discipline and how we want to proceed with that, and also talking about our five-year plan. So a couple of big topics to be discussing.
All right, Ms. Gabe? Nothing? All right, and I have nothing as well. So I'm, we do have reason to go into closed session? Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the board enter, enter into a closed session to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And 2A, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a schoolastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. I'll second that. Any questions or comments? Here, none, all those in favor, say yes. Yes, all opposed, no, motion passes 4-0. We are now in closed session. Thank you for coming out.